Bob, I have to, I still.
There's been so much.
The quote was more like ever.
More.
Like right after ever.
After all these things are bad.
And then you're like, oh, that's.
It would be some.
It can all start.
There's a whole thing on this channel. To make it into historical.
It's like a museum or something. He says like somewhat close to being like.
Next call to order, the committee, the home meeting for July 29th. First item on our agenda this evening is roll call. So if everybody just wants to say their names, so it gets on the tape, that's how we're going to keep minutes tonight. Want to start, Robin?
Robin Parazza.
Jim Lancy.
Abby Beck.
Kevin Malone.
Alan Wolfe.
Jennifer Baron.
Lee Lehman.
Alice Sloman.
Dustin Peever.
Matt Anderson.
This is a forum for conduct business. Good. Okay.
Here's an answer from nurralwallet.com.
Ah, thank you. Reminder to please speak into the microphone for recording if anybody comes up and uses the mic tonight. Then items were removed, added or changed. I don't think we have any other than we are not going to have the discussion on the sign. That's already off there.
Already off there.
Okay. Item number four matters from the public. I don't see anybody. Okay, we're good to go to the consent agenda. Alderman back.
Consent agenda is to approve the minutes of the July 1st, 2025 Cow Meeting Minutes. Move reapprove the consent agenda as read.
Okay. Second by Lancy. And let's record reflect that Alderman. Vogel singer has joined us 7:04. We don't have anybody to take minutes tonight, so that's how we're making sure everybody's on. Okay, all those in favor on the consent agenda?
Aye.
Okay. Proposed, motion carries. And Chris is here.
7:04 as well.
Out there for a little.
Alderman Salfa has joined us at 7:04. And then we'll move on to the regular agenda. Item six, 6.1 is resolution 2025 98R authorizing change order number five with IHC construction companies for the Phase 2A wastewater treatment plant improvements.
Hello, I'm going to make this really brief. Jerry was here last week at city council, had mentioned that we are going to have this change order coming forth for $66,667.54. It's a compilation of site work, some things that happened while we were doing the construction. And Zach noticed some of the things that, like one of the items in here, for example, is a bolt that wasn't screwed to the bottom of our clarifier, and you wouldn't have known until it was emptied. So while we're there, we're fixing it and putting it back the way it is, so hopefully it will last for another 15 plus years. So these were kind of all the items. We did have an allowance for some construction items. All that allowance has been consumed. We had both adds and subtractions from the contract, but right now we're sitting at this just over $66,000. We feel that at this point in the year, we'll be good within that overall budget. If things change, we'll be back to do an amendment or a change order, budget amendment. But that's kind of the long and short of it.
Do you have any questions on this? Motion for resolution 2025 98R. So moved.
Second.
Okay. By Salfa. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. Point two, which is authorize, um, resolution 2025 99R authorizing execution of task order 36 with GZA.
Yes, this is, uh, we have done phase one analysis of both 102 South Batavia Avenue and also 108 South Batavia Avenue. And the results of those environmental studies are that further examination of those properties is recommended due to their past use. And so this task order is to perform that phase two analysis for both properties. Significant higher cost than the first phase one. Phase one is simply a review of documents to determine whether further investigation is necessary. A phase two includes many samples which are taken onsite and then sent to lab for analysis. And there's a lot more involved there, which is why the greater cost is warranted.
Any questions? I think this is always one of the things we, you kind of have to prepare for anytime you look at property that has had the amount of different uses that this property has had.
Yes.
For as long as it had. Okay. A motion to recommend counsel, resolution 2025 99R.
So moved.
Second.
Who made that motion?
Sarah.
Sarah. And second?
Matt.
Was Matt? Okay. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. Okay. Next is 6.3, which is a discussion on city energy policy. Max is coming.
Hello, all. I'm going to give you a quick kind of update on where we left off. We had been discussing generally kind of what are some of the considerations from you all in terms of deciding our energy policy? We're working with a brattle group right now to design our integrated resource plan. Part of that is we need a policy from you all to kind of base that plan off of how do you view and you view the trade offs kind of that we discussed during the energy survey, things like reliability, things like cost, things like green energy and all these other factors and how those weigh amongst all of you, how we weigh demand response programs, time of use rates, kind of all these other things that both affect the supply side of generation and power, but also the demand side. Since we had our last discussion, there's been some updates in kind of the capacity market. We know that we had a discussion a few months ago about the capacity prices. PJM held their auction for next year. Prices are going to go up in terms of capacity significantly so. There was a cap placed on how much they could go up. If that cap wasn't there, it would have gone up even higher. So basically what that means is the energy market continues to be rather tight. Basically, there's not enough generation and power to cover the demand and use in the, the economy right now. So I did send an email around and there's kind of three fundamental questions that we would like some guidance on tonight, hopefully. One, does the city prefer to own generation assets or contract for generation? Does the city prefer to have generation resources locally or is the city location agnostic? And I provided some information about both capacity congestion charges and kind of how those things factor in. And then what levels of resource diversification does the city desire? There were some other guiding questions that we had provided a couple of weeks ago, but we're happy to answer any questions and kind of share any information that you have as you want to discuss this topic.
Let's just start. Kevin?
I guess I'll jump in if no one else is eager to. You know, first off, I think this is a good conversation to have. I'm glad we're having it and being in municipal electric, it's important, I think, that we do this. Sort of the three questions, do we want to own or contract? Do we want to generate locally or do we not care? And what sort of level of diversification do we have? So just to kind of kick things off, I guess I'll just sort of shoot out where my mind goes on this. And I'm going to do the first one last. On the second item, do we want to generate locally or not? From my perspective, and I, you know, I'm certainly no expert in this, but I've been spending some time looking at kind of the PJM stuff and all that. It feels as if the closer we can have generation to us, the less externalities we have. I kind of picture this in two ways. We have the within city limits concept and then whatever's outside city limits, right? The more we can have in-house without having to go through other people's lines, it feels the better that is. If we pair that with local storage capacity, which is sort of an up and coming new area, community storage options, maybe we can have some local generation. For me, that means finding more ways to get solar panels on roofs. When that power comes through, maybe we incentivize batteries in homes or maybe we have battery storage owned by the utility. I don't know, right? That's where the policy might help give us some answers. But it feels like the closer it is, the less can, you know, problems we have. It means there's less lines that squirrels can nibble on and cut people's power, right? If it's not coming from far away, that can, that can help us. So for me, local generation kind of makes sense. And then following off of that, diversification feels like something that's really beneficial. We've kind of been tied to a coal power plant for a long time. And the less we are dependent on sort of a single source, the more options we have. However, to balance that out, I do feel that owning the generation is something that is important to me at least. It's maybe lower on my priority list. If it's something that needs to be outsourced or sloughed off to reach the other priorities, I'm okay with that. But owning a diverse portfolio of power generation feels to me that gives us some leverage in a market where we are both putting stuff in the pipeline and taking stuff out of the pipeline. So rather than just being the people taking stuff out the pipeline, we're also putting something in, which I believe would probably give us a little more leverage and a greater stake in the larger stake of things, even if we're a small fish. But, I mean, there's a whole lot to learn. Like this is a complex, complicated issue, so I, I might be way off base. And so I'm really also eager just to kind of hear what other folks think, sort of what the, what we think things will, will go towards. Last comment I'll make is I've kind of prioritized things in sort of three areas. Resilience, number one. Carbon free production is the second priority and then cost is kind of the third priority. And really in that order, right? We want to keep the lights on. I think that's really important. I think that's sort of vital in today's age. Second, those electrons, if we can have them in a carbon neutral or carbon free sort of scenario, that's a high priority for me at least. And then of also another priority, but after those other two is making sure it's affordable, making sure that folks can plug in their, their stuff without paying an arm and a leg.
Alice?
Kevin, I wanted to ask you, when you're talking about owning generation assets or having a diverse portfolio, I just wanted you to clarify, do you mean a combination of both? That you're interested in us owning some generation and also diversifying our portfolio off-site or one or the other?
I don't know, right? And I think the, as I think on it, you know, owning part of a power plant has come with benefits as much as we would like to. The Prairie State hasn't always been the best deal, but there are advantages that have come from that, right? And so kind of trying to find that balance. And I don't have an answer, just like if I had a dream, you know, if I had a dream, it would be to kind of own. I do think some of that needs to be within city limits, though. I think there are ways we can do that with solar in particular. We can own some generation and maybe it's a small fraction, maybe it's not everything we need, but every little, you know, every kilowatt counts. So I hope that faithfully answers.
Yeah, I just wanted to understand where you were sitting with it. I have some comments that I can add to this as well. And doing my research, it seems that going nuclear seems to be the cheapest and the fastest and the most, the least wasteful as well right now. I'd like to see Batavia go small scale nuclear, whether that means owning our own plant or investing in that. It just seems like we should be responsible stewards of our environment and also fiscally responsible as well. So if this is the cheapest, it's best for our environment, you know, that's the way I'd like to go. And as far as the city preferring to have a resources locally, I think that ties into also having them more local. And that can look in different ways, right? It can look, we can have the distribution side battery, storage, so that's closer to us, so it's cheaper and also more accessible. And looking at the comments that we received from the community, it looks like everybody overall favors reliability and lower cost, right? So for, to me, it seems that to have the, sorry, I'm like, my brain rattled today. But to have the power source generated locally would be more reliable. And if we were going nuclear, lower cost as well. I am in favor of diversifying our portfolio as well. I think it makes sense to go in small steps, right? You can't make a huge transition right away. So whether that is diversifying in small steps and then taking steps to go nuclear, if everyone agrees with that way, makes sense. So overall, I mean, I think energy storage is a good idea, solar renewables as well. Anything that would make our energy more reliable and a lower cost to everybody. I mean, the future, we're emitting more carbon every year, right? And that, studies have shown that that's detrimental to our environment. Mass extinction, you know, is closer than we'd like. And it just seems that we should be looking at and exploring avenues that are cheaper and renewable and just more reliable for us. So I guess that's where I'm at with that. I don't have another question that I need to answer, but I think the direction I'd like to see Batavia go into is, is that. It was a little scattered, I apologize.
My number one thought, if we want to just kind of break it down like Alderman Malone did, I have a little bit different order. My order would be number one would be cost. Number two, reliability. And then number three, the renewable situation. I mean, if you just look at the, the article that Max had sent us, in terms of the cleared capacity, 45% was gas fired, nuclear or coal was 22%, nuclear 21%, hydroelectric 4%, wind 3%, and solar 1%. Simply by those percentages, by definition, we know what's going to be more expensive and what's going to be less expensive in terms of where we're going to be getting our power from. So my thought would be we get the most cost effective power that says reliable, basically reliability and cost, but what's going to be reliable but for the least cost to the citizens? Because I mean, I know that everybody has personal agendas and everybody has thoughts on the overall outlook of the planet Earth, so to speak. I'm looking at the city of Batavia and I just want to have cheap, reliable power at this point in time. I'm not really looking to change the world necessarily. I'm just looking to make sure that the city has reliable power that is cheap. Because when it all comes down to it, you know what we're going to hear about? Things being too expensive and city bills. And so those are my views on that. And so I am not an expert in this field in any way whatsoever, but in terms of giving direction to staff, that's the direction I would give in my personal view. And I think the view of much of the unsilent majority of this town in terms of cost.
Go back and forth.
Oh, yeah. Mine's also going to be a little scatter shot just because there's different ways we can approach this. Part of the trick with this, especially given our energy portfolio timeline, is we are in the middle of a lot of new developments in energy usage that it's hard to predict what the market will be when we're actually having to start transitioning to something. You know, battery technology is improving every year. Various nuclear technologies have been having a bit of a renaissance lately. And it's going to be difficult to anticipate ahead of time with this study, with where we're at right now, the best strategy moving forward, but it will, is also good for us to keep looking at it as things progress. One thing I'd read interesting recently, and I'm not entirely sold on this myself because I would need to see the numbers on all of it. There's been proposals around of converting coal plants to nuclear. They, especially using modular reactors. This can save a lot of money in the long term because, oh, most of the transmission infrastructure and power generating infrastructure from the turbines, it's already there. You're really just swapping out the boiler for a reactor. Obviously, there's a lot more to that than just one or the other. Although with advances in modular reactor technology, that's actually getting to be that easy. These are wholly contained units that just have the steam pipes at the end that you can potentially make those connections. Again, that technology still being worked on, it hasn't been, you know, implemented yet as far as I'm aware, but there's been a lot of promise in that field. That could be an option for the Prairie State Coal Plant, transition to the nuclear towards the end of the coal lifetime. Obviously, that all depends on the state of the transmission infrastructure and the power generation infrastructure at that time, too. There's a reason its decommissioning age is there. It's not necessarily just the coal side. I don't know the details on that. That would be part of that study, but that's one option. And another thought I had just now, looking at this discussion, could the city create a solar leasing model for some of our larger businesses here that have a lot of like roof space, that have a lot of even parking lot space, that they could build canopy style solar, where the city technically owns the generation capability, but leases out the space of those larger users and they would get a cut of the deal from that? That way we can have local, you know, on-demand solar that the city has control over while working best with the space we have. Could be an option. And that could, you know, provide us a lot of local options. That being said, there's also a benefit to geographic diversification in case we get hit by something really bad. Obviously, we'll still have the grid. We'd still be, we'd still have the grid, but we'd be exposed to the larger energy market that way. So having, you know, maybe a partnership connection with like wind farms downstate or, you know, whatever technologies make sense, maybe not to the extent that we did with the Prairie State Coal Plant where we're all in, but like a smaller share ownership could go a long way of multiple sources, even peaker plants as necessary, just because to fill out those things. Those are, I think, always going to be useful, at least in the near to midterm. But if you're not relying on them, if they're not your primary source of generation, that's what we want to be moving towards, just there to fill in the gaps. That's, I think, the most likely path forward. Energy storage as well, I think it makes sense that that's just going to be a common part of our grid. I think that's going to have a lot of benefits for our nation's grid as a whole, energy storage becoming common throughout the communities in our areas, because then that's taking a lot of strain off the grid because you're able to pull electricity locally. The national grid, I mean, it means that if systems go down on the national scale, heck, a solar flare even, there could be local backup power options. I just think that's a, a positive going forward at decentralizing our power infrastructure a bit. That's obviously a bit broader picture, but I definitely see a case for energy storage. We need to look at how the market develops in that because it's going to become a developing market. I think we're seeing the start of that now. But I could see that be a major consideration for the power economy in the next decade or two. And I think this study especially will be a major part of that. And we should be keeping a weather eye on that to implement that here, because then you get that peak shaving advantage. Even if we're still on the coal plant, we can get peak shaving. We can get other economic benefits in the town. So I think it's definitely worthwhile.
All right, so I've got, I've got some notes and there's a bunch of questions sprinkled in that I'll just kind of throw out to the ether. I don't know, I don't know who can answer them or if they are relevant or not. So feel free to jump in anytime. So I, I thought this through in terms of my overall vision is to have an electric utility that's resilient, competitive and sustainable. That's not in the correct order, but of course I want all those things. And I would put sustainability and the carbon neutral probably top. But I'll kind of get into that here a little bit more. But I also want an electric utility that's mitigating the risks of future cleanup costs, much like we're going to be discussing with our coal plant. And then that's also a fear that I would have about owning a nuclear plant in the future. Future transition costs imposed by changing regulations. So something that I'll get into when I get to Max's questions about the difference between owning or leasing the power contracting for the power is what do we lock ourselves into? And then if regulations change, as we've seen with Prairie State, then what are the costs associated with transitioning out of a contract or being stuck somewhere? And then also the PJM capacity charges, which I think Kevin touched on a little bit. As, I mean, I would hope that those charges don't continue to escalate in the future, but I'll get into some questions about that in a moment. So I've also thought about this in terms of two different time scales, what actions we can take here in the next five years that could inform our long range plan, since obviously a lot of this will not go into effect until after Prairie State is closed. So in the next five years, I would like to see the city use the bag fee money and then the data center fees as well to incentivize energy efficiency, self-generation, adopting the stretch code here for maximum efficiency of new build construction and just see how much we can expand that green program that we started with the bag fee money now to get our city using less and being more efficient in general. Incentivize and implement the demand side programs, the smart meters, the time of day rates. I want to see what we can get our demand side down to, because I think that would help us mitigate those capacity charges. If we only are demanding a fraction of what we're demanding now, then will that reduce our exposure to the PJM fluctuations? And then in five years, be able to evaluate that success. Like how much did our energy usage across town go down? How much did it cost to make that impact? What can we extrapolate from there in terms of our demand behavior from that experiment? And what would increases in that incentive look like if cross-town? What would the impact of be investing, what would the impact be of investing in renewables for all municipal buildings here? What would that have on our demand? And how, how does this impact expected capacity post Prairie State? Like I said, if we can reduce it, are we then less vulnerable to the capacity charge if we are going out into the PJM market? Which then I have questions about the PJM market, something to Kevin's point about self-generation and spreading self-generation around town. Certainly, we don't have enough space or capacity here to do a large scale, like behind the meter, generation here. If we're talking about leasing or buying energy, we're still on the PJM market. We're still not necessarily getting those direct electrons unless they're like right here, right here locally, right? Like we'd have to build a solar farm within this footprint or if we were not to be like...
Steve, can you answer that?
Yes, that's pretty much correct. We'd have to build something that is exactly right behind the meter. Yeah. Within the city limits.
So, okay, to get into Max's questions then, does, do we prefer to own or contract? I think it depends for me on the type. I think that we are safer buying things like solar, wind or geothermal power. I don't see those going away too much. Things that cost a lot to clean up like nuclear, I would rather contract for that. I would also want to see what the payoff times of all of those technologies are and making sure that we will get into a situation where we, what would those cross those lines or whatever the phrase was with Prairie State? Does the city prefer to have generation resources locally or city agnostic? So knowing that we're not going to get so local that we're behind the meter, there is something, like Kevin said, to having it at least closer by, especially if it's not super clean, those, just kind of that. not super clean, those, just kind of that feedback, having it right there in the backyard, being, not being able to externalize that too much. All the downsides of generation, whatever the form is, not having that be in some far-off community, feeling the impacts of our power generation, like if it's bad, then we should be willing to have it close to our home. And then I also want to identify battery storage opportunities and maybe again, use some of the data center funds to look into opportunities for the city for that. And then what levels of diversification I would like to see, I mean, it's, any diversification at this point would be such an improvement. And I, so I'd like to see diversification. I worry about, and, and Steve, you can probably answer this, it's probably easier to manage one NMPA, and I don't know what that arrangement would look like if suddenly you've got six different providers, like what did that do from a staffing capacity?
I mean, if it was from a contract basis, it doesn't really matter. You know, if you're buying energy contracts out there, it's, it's just like anything else, you know, who, if you were a grocery store, you have multiple different vendors, you just sign a contract and it happens. But if we, again, owning any generation, there's the maintenance, there's the staffing, there's the upkeep, there's, there's a lot to owning generation, as you all know from Prairie State.
Right. So that would also maybe make me think twice about what owning a diverse portfolio would be. What impact does that have on our staff? I assume the study will look into that. All of that to say, just diversification, yes. And I would love a phased approach to our diversification that leaves us flexible enough to get to 100% carbon-free in line with the state's timeline.
Thank you, Abby. I was very excited to hear your thoughts on this topic, because you are a resident expert. I'm pulling Max's email. So the owning versus contracting or renting, whatever, I has, I feel excited about the prospect of owning something else or having a share in something else, but do have a concern just after the Prairie State situation that does give me pause, but I assume everyone here has learned a great deal from that, and everybody there did the best that they could with the information they had, so I totally understand that, but obviously being cautious about the owning portion. Diversification, yes, anything is better than the singular source that we have now. And, hang on. The third location, I think, diversification in that, too. I think that's some locally, and then the battery storage, as others have brought up. I think there's been a lot of really great points here tonight. This is a very complex conversation, and we're so tied to Prairie State, it's kind of theoretical in nature, too. I want to see us do the best we can for our land and our residents and everything, so seeking out diversification with, if possible, eventually, keeping the cost affordable. Yeah, and looking into whatever options present themselves.
Good, good, good thoughts, everybody, and appreciate everyone's input. I'm honestly surprised anybody said own. I thought that would all kind of chap us a little bit, but, you know, could there be potential upside to owning? Yes, but the potential downside that is totally unknown, which is what we're running into right now with Prairie State, that they didn't know when we signed the contract, is exactly how we found ourselves here. So I, and, and with a much more, I would say, dynamic and volatile market now than I believe it was back then, in terms of we don't know where we're going to go in the fork in the road, right? We're in multiple directions as, as a country, as a society, as a region, you know, they could all change. I am a fan of nuclear and seeing where that goes. You know, after doing a lot of research into the renewables that we have today, I mean, we just have to call a spade a spade. We're just not there yet with them. You know, we, we have wind turbines that take 600 gallons of oil and, and are made out of carbon fiber that can't be buried, you know? So at what point are we helping or hurting, right? And so these are all things that, that run through my mind. With the prolific, proliferation of data centers and the massive amounts of power that are needed for these, nuclear, I believe, in my mind, is going to find its way to the forefront. Why? Because of the overall goodness of it in terms of some of these micro-nuclear things that, that companies are coming out with. I don't think anything's really there yet from a market perspective, but a lot of promise going in that direction. And then with, I agree with Dustin with what, with the retrofit capabilities. Sure, if we could get generation closer to us, that would be, I think, fantastic. I don't think it gets worse as it gets closer to us. Obviously, we can't have it behind the meter in most cases, but, you know, theoretically behind the meter, so to speak, you know, or as close as we can get. And again, you know, some of this stuff, you know, maybe doesn't even need to be brought up because it's not even possible or won't be possible with the current infrastructure that's going to be in place for 50 to 100 years or whatever it might be. So, you know, some of that, I think, needs to be looked through, but I just think, you know, I think the market's too dynamic right now, we're not there with renewables. I don't want staff to lock us into anything long-term, AKA, I want a contract, you know, and if I got to go in a, you know, said list like, you know, others have done, I mean, I truly think reliability has to be top, cost has got to be number two, and I really truly believe if we polled this town, those two would come up up top, and I think everybody around this table can agree that the majority of this town, those two things, one of them would end up on top. Now, I think us as a society, we're moving that third button closer, right? So sustainability is riding right along, I think, because everybody wants that, too, but at the same time, we're on our way there, we have to live in the reality we live in. So, you know, and I think a lot of people know a lot more and have intrinsic knowledge about the Prairie State contract and some of the maybe mishaps and things that don't work well for staff and dealing with NMPA and whatever. So, you know, obviously, we want to put our heads together and just learn from that as much as possible. Obviously, I know you guys are, but from a direction standpoint, that would be, that would be my direction.
That's kind of a follow-up question here, and maybe it's, so nuclear power's come up quite a few times here, and my understanding of the status of it is that we're five years away, the same way we were five years ago, right? Every five years, we're five years away. And the question, though, like, it's, it's promising, like, the promise of it appears to be something that's coming up a lot. The question I would have as a policymaker is, as a city, how much risk are we willing to put into new technologies? So that would apply to battery, that would apply to nuke, and for me, at least, that level of risk, I'm willing to take a little bit of risk on it, right? Like, if the, the second new nuclear plant's opening up, maybe I'd buy into it. If it's the first new nuclear plant, maybe I wouldn't. I don't know, that's sort of a rough sort of gauge, but I guess I would just kind of want to ask the table, like...
Do you think nuclear's new? Just curious.
No, I, what I mean by new would be, you know, we haven't built a new one in, what, 60 years, right?
Oh.
And so, and so what I mean is one of the new, one of these third gen, right? We're on third gen nuke, I think, right? One of these new ones that we're talking about, these microreactors, the, the new technology that we're so promised on. But I guess the question I would have for all of you guys is, like, at what point would we be like, yeah, let's put a little bit of money into this thing, which maybe isn't proven, but we feel good about, versus we want to wait until it's like established, we know it's going to work, then we buy into it? Because that's something as a policymaker, I'd want, I'd want to know the answer to.
I'm bringing a bias. My dad worked a nuclear power plant just over the lake, so I'm, I'm biased with that.
The nuclear plant?
So, yeah.
The cook plant?
No, Palisades. So he dealt with whenever they had outages, to identify why the outage happened and what they could do to prohibit it from happening again. He said he worked in engineering, I thought he walked around with like a hammer banging on stuff, but...
I guess one thing...
So I'm biased, so I'm sitting out from this.
Matt?
Yeah.
You have something to say, Matt?
Sorry, really quickly, just to provide some context about the regulatory landscape around nuclear right now, Illinois does not currently permit construction of large nuclear reactors, and at this time, there are no commercially viable small modular reactors. So kind of like Alderwoman Beck mentioned, in this five-year kind of timeline and then the 20-year timeline, you know, nuclear may be viable in the longer-term timeline, but really in that kind of immediate timeline, it's going to have some real challenges. And then to Alderman Malone's point, one of the other dimensions that Brattle will be considering is proven technologies versus kind of some more emergent technologies. We had been kind of operating under the assumption that there's generally a desire towards things that are proven, that our role as a utility is kind of to provide reliable, affordable, and renewable, or to the extent we're able to power. And so taking those risks is something that, is something we would like guidance on all, from all of you on, is to what extent are you willing to take risks? You know, that means that, you know, when we first signed into Prairie State, I think it was more expensive originally than we had anticipated, and then...
And what, what happened was, they had projected a cost of just over $2 billion to build the plant, and then right after all of the agreements were made and construction began, the regulatory landscape changed. And so there was very expensive equipment that then needed to be added to the facilities, and those are the type of things that you just can't predict.
And they also had quite a few legal battles with, here's the standard you have to achieve. Nobody's ever been able to do it yet, but that's what we're going to hold you to, so you have to try to design that while you're building the plant. And then they had to fight to get that legally reduced so they could actually, in day-to-day operations, attain that level. So I think it was only 5% difference on, it was sulfur dioxide that they had to reduce, and that was one of the big billion-dollar changes in the plan. Something that I think we all have to remember, too, is, as much as we may not like Prairie State environmentally, we have not raised our rates in 10 years. So, you know, the one thing that people always complain about is price, no matter what it is we're doing, whether it's brush pickup or garbage stickers or whatever it is, it's always price that people want. The reliability question, I think, is a local thing that we have to deal with. Yes, there may be issues with congestion or whatever term is used on the grid itself, and when you get, you know, plants are, you know, users out in decal that all of a sudden there's a, what is it, 500 megawatts out there, Steve? Or bigger? The, the new data center out there is just a massive thing. That's things that we can't control, and I don't think that the supply, you know, what we get through Fermilab is, is really at, at a danger of being an infrastructure choke point where it would hurt us. It's all the little lines and within the city. And, you know, something that I've thought about, I've had to replace a few appliances lately and looking at the difference in gas, electric, induction, all the different things that you could, to do to either heat water or cook on. It, it's apparent to me that the push that was here probably five years ago to electrify everything everywhere isn't there right now. You know, when you go out and you go into the five different appliance places I went to, that's never even a question. They ask you what you want, and they point out, you know, the least expensive, the most expensive, and the one you buy in the middle. I think it's really important that we do look at diversification into the future, and I think part of that is so that when there's technology out there, when there's the right thing to do, we can be in the, the position where we can buy into that. Right after we got, I don't know, four or five years into Prairie State, we seriously looked at, even though we weren't, you know, able to use all the power we had out of the plant, we were looking at different wind farms, just to try to be diversified. There was all these grants, all kinds of things out there that would be, you know, helpful in that, and we couldn't even get to the point where we were buying power as cheap as we were buying it out of the plant, which was 20% higher than ComEd could sell it to our, you know, citizens that are on ComEd. Today, I think it's a different world. Just looking at what happened with the, the auction, that to me shows how much demand there is out there, and that's something that we don't have control of, other than what we allow in our own city limits. But, you know, trying to lure businesses and, you know, make employment opportunities in this state, there's going to be more of those. There's a lot of empty land along highways in Illinois that people are going to buy and trying to turn in to moneymakers, and that's only going to drive the price up every year. So the fact that we have a coal plant that generates more than what our city needs, in my mind, right now, is not a bad thing to get us through to when the technology is there. It's just like, to me, how the electric car fad has kind of cooled off, right, now? And there's some extremely promising technology out there with several major manufacturers building hydrogen-fired internal combustion engines that leave water and CO2, that's it. And it's, it's really amazing what can happen. I really feel like by the time we get to the end of the plant, there's either going to be the small little nuclear plants that we can put up anywhere, and we'll get to a regulation that allows that, or we're going to have some type of either fusion or hydrogen-powered heater for turbines to be able to generate electricity on a very small scale, where you could have these local projects, where you wouldn't have, you know, it, it's funny to me because I think of the battery storage. When I was a kid, my dad worked for Illinois Bell, and we would go into the Wheaton office every year for Fourth of July parade, and we'd get our little tour of the, the building. Downtown Wheaton had a 871 Detroit diesel and a hole alongside the building that was a generator, and it had a six-inch pipe that just belched black, two-stroke diesel when it ran. But they also had a wall as long as this room with 48-volt batteries with, I don't remember if I guessed, it was some crazy amount, like 25,000 gallons of acid in the basement of this office building. And when the power went off, that's what made it so you could call. That's why the phones never went dead. They operated off of that. So the batteries would go till they would be discharged, then the generator would go on. And that was diversification. I'm sure if they had the technology to have solar cells on the roof, that's what would have charged the batteries. So, you know, it's been done other ways for decades. I think it's something that, as long as we're ready to make those changes and do it small increments, I think we'll be okay. Anybody else got comments? Staff know what we think?
I just had a couple of things that I wanted to throw out there as I heard the discussions that I thought, you know, would be good things to keep in mind, not, you know, weighing on one side or the other. One thing that I didn't hear presented, one of the benefits of ownership is the stability of the price, right? That's, that's the primary reason why the city got into Prairie State, was the stability of the price and not being subject to the volatility of the open market.
And that was something that we, like unanimously agreed on, was even if you didn't like some of the environmental issues or you didn't know what was going to happen when we had to shut the plant down, you know, one of the things that we, we talked about was, we don't know what those costs are going to be. We don't know what those regulations are going to be because it's 30-plus years away. And, you know, for, for us to, to get into that, that stability of having the plant on top of the coal that we needed to use, and, you know, cutting out the 300-car diesel train that came out of the Powder River Basin to bring coal to Illinois, because that was all that was legally allowed to be burnt here, that's, that's an environmental cost that, you know, a lot of people don't understand or don't even think about, unless you go up to Geneva and sit there and watch the train going every day into Chicago and dump that load of coal. So, you know, the stability to have that price, like I said, we haven't raised our rates in 10 years.
And right now, basically, our basic cost of a kilowatt is between 11 and 12 cents. There was an article this week that came out that said the average price of a kilowatt in the state of Illinois is 18 cents. So with that, you know, purpose, it, it does look good.
And in all reality...
It speaks to what you just said about the, the rates being stable, regardless of what you think about Prairie State.
Right. The PPAF has gone up and down to adjust for what we can sell and make any money or lose any money on, whatever that might be, but the basic rate has been the same. There's nothing else in the city that I think we do that's that, been that stable. I mean, our, our sewer and water rates have gone up 8% for the last, what, five years? So yes, people's end bill, just like I always joke that it doesn't matter if the school district is taxing to the max or not, people only look at the bottom line. They look at the last, the dollar amount on the bill they get. They don't care where it came from, they don't care what is PPAF, baseload cost, heat cost, whatever it is. That's not what they care about. They look at the bottom line and they say, wow, my bill went up 10%.
And the other thing that I wanted to bring up, I didn't hear any mention of full-service agreements like...
agreements like IMEA. The advantages of an IMEA are if they are in alignment with your energy policy, you will have the buying power of 28 other communities when you go to negotiate for ownership or just contracting for energy with other sources. And so, of course, there's an advantage to that. The disadvantage is that they have a board of only so many members who are making those decisions, and you, your community may not necessarily serve on that board. So, there's pluses and minuses to it, but I do think that it's something that I want to make sure that you consider the pluses and minuses of a full-service agreement. And IMEA, right now, in terms of diversification, is doing better than the state of Illinois overall.
Right. And that's one thing I was going to say, if you get, you know, half the communities that are in that pool that are out looking to buy energy, and they say, we want 20% instead of 10% of carbon-neutral or, you know, carbon-free generation, then that holds some weight, if that many go together to do something like that. And again, that will also, I think, help with the price and the availability of whether it be us owning something, or a for-profit company owning it, if they see the need or they see the demand for it, and it's technology that they're willing to go in on. You know, to me, I always look at it, if, you know, there's a company out there that's willing to go at it from the private side, risk their capital to sell their product, that's probably something that makes sense, you know? And when it's a government project, and the government is here to help you, then I have a real big, I need to step back and really investigate this and think about it before I want to get involved in it.
Dustin?
Just to clarify, IMEA, do they own any power sources, or are they just negotiating with the market?
Similar to us, they are part owners in Prairie State.
But not full, not...
No.
That's not their whole portfolio?
It is not. They are completely diversified.
Do they own the Springfield plan, or part of the Springfield plan?
Not to my knowledge. I don't think CWLP.
And actually, that's an interesting thought. If we had some of our own power sources as a part of IMEA, would that be a way to, like, sell it internally with them as maybe like a middle ground kind of thing?
And we've got time to explore those things because we, several years ago, sought to join IMEA as opposed to being part of NMPA. And they said, we can't have those discussions until your bonds are paid off.
Oh.
So...
Amy?
A couple questions. First, is there an IMEA alternative that isn't IMEA, but functions on the similar, functions similarly, or that could be created in the future with other like-minded communities? I have some issues with IMEA currently as it stands, and I like being one of three in NMPA. I don't want to be one of 30 in IMEA, where you do lose that control, where you do lose that say.
And that's something, I mean, NMPA was formed as a project-based thing to do Prairie State with. Originally, it was Rochelle, Geneva, St., was it St. Charles and Naperville? Or Naperville? There was other cities that backed out.
Yeah, it was just Rochelle, Batavia, Geneva, and Geneseo.
Okay, Geneseo.
Geneseo was the town that actually backed out, yeah.
Okay.
And then the other comment...
I don't know of another agency other than IMEA. It's like they represent everyone else who isn't NMPA.
When we get to the end of the contract with Prairie State, we could form or keep NMPA moving into the future to have the ability to bargain for three cities.
Sure, which is great. The other comment I just wanted to make about, when we talk about resilience and reliability, to be specific about what part of the system you're talking about being resilient, there's a lot of investment that we need to make on the city-side grid, our system, to make sure that when I turn my lights on, when we turn our power on here, it turns on in this building and stuff like that. When we're talking about sources of power being more reliable or less reliable, yes, there are congestion and pricing and whatever, and the amount of electrons entering the system, entering the bigger grid, but the electrons that are hitting this, hitting Batavia's system are coming from all over the place. We're buying into a big ocean of electrons that come here. So, whether they're green electrons or they're coal electrons, that's a different reliability and resilience conversation. So, just when we're talking about it, I think it was really confusing in the survey when I was going through the results, what people were talking about when they rated reliability or resilience high. Are they talking about Batavia's system? Or are they talking or not understanding how electrons get to us through PGM? So, I just want to make sure we are clarifying that whenever we are talking about it. And then, just to the, to the cost, I, you know, as I said, I think, I think moving to carbon-neutral at a slightly higher cost, as was represented in the survey, is still the right way to go, even if we're 11 cents and the average is 18 cents. That cost difference is going to be spent by our residents and by each and every one of us in adapting and mitigating to climate change. And so, there is great benefit to spending a little to maintain quality of life.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on one thing real quick that I hadn't meant to mention earlier, but sort of, I think I talked about sort of the within-city limits and the outside-city limits when I was talking about resiliency, and I don't think I really followed up on the inside-city limits thing. I know we had that study a while back from the grad students at, it was the University of Chicago or Northwestern, I apologize if I forget, that all our stuff's real old, and it's getting older. I do believe, sort of internally, I think it's okay for us to spend some bucks, really buckle down, and aggressively pursue our internal upgrades that we need to do. I don't think we should be afraid of the costs. And I think with some of the changes to our energy use in town, with the data center coming in, I think we may have some opportunities to do some aggressive upgrades. So, just as we're having a policy talk, I just want to really make sure we emphasize, we should probably get that list put together and start knocking it off, maybe double time if we, if we can, is what I'd like to, like to see.
That's a major part of the Brattle Group study, is what follows from the resource planning is the resiliency. What follows from the resiliency is what it will cost, and what follows from what it will cost is the rate structure that we will use to make sure that there's funding available for that.
I think just, you know, even beyond resiliency, we have to think about, you know, the grids and the older part of the, the older neighborhoods in town. You know, I know that, in my mind and probably demographically, you're probably going to see more electric cars in the newer houses, but there are going to be some in, you know, the older parts of town. And so, we are going to have to figure out or plan for how we make sure that happens. I mean, I had this discussion a long years ago with Gary Holm, that, you know, if just 10% of the people, 10% of the houses in town got one electric car, how many transformers would we have to replace? How much wiring would we have to replace? What would it cost us to get there in five years or 10 years when, you know, 10% or more of the public has that? And he just was like this, was, you know, his response was, I don't know how we do it. It's just like taking care of the roads. I don't know that we'll ever be on a normal schedule to try to update or repair roads or replace, you know, sections of roadway that we have. And that's something, you know, that I think about every time I see a new development come in, and I wonder, okay, so what happens when, you know, 10 or 20% of those houses have electric, or have two electric cars, or are electrified, where there are no gas burning, you know, utilities in the house? That's something that, I think, as much as we all want to make sure that we conserve and we don't use as much electricity, I think just by design, in 10 or 20 or 30 years, we're going to be in the middle of that. And, you know, hopefully, to me, the hydrogen fuel cell thing takes off for automotive, because that's something that I think is very easily sustainable.
Hydrogen with electricity.
Well, somewhere else.
Yeah, but it's a lot less cost.
Dustin?
One, another side of that, though, is there's a lot we can do on the rate structure side of things to mitigate that. A lot of the, a lot of electric cars let you program into them when they charge, such that if we have a rate structure that benefits late-night charging when the grid is not having as much, you know, energy being pulled from it, that would then trickle down to homeowners programming those electric systems to charge overnight when that rate is lower, which means that we won't need as much capacity on our local grid, let alone the broader, you know, market. So, that can be a way to balance energy usage throughout the day, because like, we all know, the energy usage is not linear throughout the day. It's part of what's called the duck curve, if you want to look up a term out there for folks watching. It's also just very whimsical. But if you can flatten that curve a bit, less whimsical, then you get a lot more out of the existing system. So, there are solutions out there, and a rate structure is going to be a big part of that, and I'm sure certain Brattle Group is going to look into that, that can, if not completely mitigate that problem, definitely smooth it out for us. So, it's not, you know, it's not a immediate, you know, no option thing. It's a, it's going to be a multidisiplinary approach alongside inconvenient investment in our, in our infrastructure. And as an aside, I'm a big proponent of what you might call productive development patterns. The fact that we're having trouble keeping up with our roads, the fact that we're having trouble keeping up with our transmission lines in maintenance long-term plays a big part into that. It's a big case for more infill development in town that pays a larger return in taxes per given unit of land area, considering that's the major contributor to infrastructure cost is service area serviced. So, that's my take on that.
Yeah.
Just, do I understand exactly what we're even doing tonight? We're making a policy that will inform Brattle Group, correct? And then, for them to bring that back to us, what, we've hired them. At that point, do we see ourselves adjusting our policy based on what they bring back to us? Like, you know...
I think short-term, yes, we would probably do some of that in there, but I think it's also, to me, part of it has to be a vision of where we think we're going to go, or how we think we're going to get there. Because, you know, I'm not going to be here. There's going to be other people here that are not on the council in five, or 10, or 15, 20 years. And I think, you know, to get us through that timeframe, you know, short-term, we have to think about what we can do with the contract that we have, and, you know, what do we focus on for the next 10, 15 years to get us to that point where, you know, what are, you know, regulations that are made by other people that are going to be upon us, that really none of us know where that's going to go? You know, and how do we think, you know, whatever comes out of the study, that we can apply that to our utility and our population?
We're just looking at basically a high-level understanding of a policy so that Brattle can bring us back specifics.
And then, honestly, it's going to be up to the council to decide, you know, how aggressive do we do one side versus another? Do we set a policy that, you know, even if our costs don't go up, we're going to raise our rate 1% or 2% to be able to put money aside, to upgrade our facilities, to add another transform, you know?
It just feels complicated to do specifics within the policy when we don't even know what Brattle Group's going to be, bring back to us. I think they're looking for answers that are more from a 30,000-foot level than granular. And so, they're looking for broad brush policy. You know, the things that Max had in the email about ownership versus not owning it. Do you, do you tend one way or the other on those broad issues? And then, you know, they'll, they'll bring back something that matches that. In this first, let's call it five-year period, because this IRP is going to kind of be looking at, okay, over the course of the next five years, we don't have a lot of, we can't make a decision about getting other energy, right? But then, it also takes that look of what happens between five and 20 years? Lot less known about that, but we'd kind of like to know what direction council would like to go if they had those types of choices, because when we redo the IRP in five years, they will already have known that, that's part of our IRP. And whether it's Brattle Group or someone else who picks it up to do the renewal, they do that with it in mind. And of course, at that time, we take a look at our policy as one of the very first things that we do and say, is that still our policy?
And I think that that's something that, you know, we, in the next five years, we could come out and say, you know what? You build a building in our industrial park over 100,000 square feet, you have to have X number of solar, you know, capability built in your, in your project, you know? And then, that gets managed back through the city electric utility. You know, because to me, especially solar-wise, that would be peak power that's available, that we might actually need. So, I mean, I think that there's things out there that we don't daily think about that are going to be part of our policy going forward. You know, and I do like the fact that there are ways to do it, to build, basically, it's a, you know, canopy over a parking lot that's solar.
Mm-hmm. I was just going to also just mention, I feel like any municipality that's having these conversations, their top three at this time would be cost, reliability, and diversification. So, I guess what I'm still trying to figure out is where exactly is this discussion going tonight? Or what do you need beyond that? Because, I mean, that seems pretty obvious. I think we have a lot from the discussion, and so, what Max had planned to do was to take all of these words that we have heard tonight and try to put that into a draft policy for you to look at and say, that seems to be consistent with, you know, the types of things that we've been saying here tonight. And/or, you know, go back to the drawing board, and here are the changes that we'd like you to make to it. So...
And then, Brattle Group uses that as one of the components in there.
What are we paying them again? What? How much should we pay them?
A lot more than we make.
In all of the four studies, I believe it is around $400,000?
A lot more than we make because they have a lot more experience, a lot more trading. I admitted right away when I made my comments, this is my area of expertise.
Yeah.
Eight hundreds, upper eight hundreds, close to a million?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm halfway with Leah on that. It's like, should be able to sum together with... You'd be shocked if you looked back to the time we started into Prairie State, how much money we've spent out of the electric utility. I think it's all been funded out of the electric utility. I don't think we've had to go into the general fund, but I mean, it's in the millions that we spent to try to look at any legal way out of it, any, you know, a little tiny window we could, we could sneak out that side. It's just not there, which whoever was writing the contracts when we got into that and set up everything that was set up for that, everybody got screwed in that. Everybody got it. Yeah. Well, and you look at Peabody was never going to own that plant. They built that to make money. They built that to employ thousands of people that they had that they couldn't employ elsewhere when other coal plants shut down, and so, their coal that they owned elsewhere was worthless, you know, or not worth as much, I should say. You know, and that, I think, was the reality of that plant, plus all the regulations that got changed in it, all the things that changed during the construction that just, you know, cost overruns that doubled the price of it.
I just want to clarify that. I'm very much in support of the Brattle Group, and I'm looking forward to what they bring to us. And I just want to make sure that we are not getting too far into the weeds of things that we don't even know for our possibilities, or, you know, that's not tonight's discussion. So, and I'm...
Some of those things get answered with what we've talked about tonight, combined with that study, then, you know, do you really want to focus on this? They have much better, you know, finger on the pulse of what's going on out there. You know, did I think that the capacity auction was going to be, hit the cap that they had? No, but it did. And it did it immediately, you know? So... Okay. Where we're going with that? Do you have any other questions for us, Max? Good. Okay. Always do. Okay, then we move on to explore discussion on city council committees. Sure, did everybody see the letter that the mayor sent out, his email, and since he could not be here tonight, you wanted to make sure everybody...
Yeah, I think his primary concern was whether, no matter what structure that you put in place, he was concerned that there were some who wanted to go back to the committees having monthly meetings away from committee of the whole.
Chris?
I had just a thought.
Okay.
I do not believe we should in any way go back to doing that. I don't... I don't really have a problem with the concept of having committee heads, but I would like to keep it more reduced in size, maybe like four at most. Number one. Number two, the purpose of having a committee head and then maybe like the vice or the second in command for whatever committee would be, would be to simply have that individual be told what memos and what topics are coming up that week for the COW, so they can pay particular attention to that particular memo, to then briefly lead a discussion and then introduce the appropriate city staff member to come up and tell us everything that's going on, just like it's been going on for the entire time I've been on council, which is why we have city staff, which again goes back to my point that I'm not an expert in 99% of the things that they do. That's why we rely on city staff. So I think that the purpose of a committee situation would be to simply have designated members on council to pay particular attention to that particular topic, to be able to be the leader of a discussion. So for instance, it doesn't always default to you, you know, like, um, type of thing. And then you would also then be the sounding board to be able to have, um, you know, questions to a certain extent. But I mean, then the main thing would be to just kind of introduce the topic and then bring up the appropriate staff member to then explain that topic and whatever the subject's going to be in detail.
Abby?
Yeah, I just wanted to say at the top of the conversation too, that maybe we'd come up with better terms so that there isn't any more. I wasn't at the last meeting, so I don't know exactly what was discussed, but I don't, I don't remember anyone ever saying that they wanted to go back to more committee meetings. So I think maybe just removing the word committee from our vocabulary and calling it just chairs or topic chairs, I don't know what to call it. But, um, I, I just wanted to start with that, that if I slip up and say committee chair, I'm still never saying that I want an extra committee meeting. But I do support having the chairs be the ones leading the discussion, being the most informed on that topic, um, and spreading out the responsibilities because I feel like too much unfairly has been placed on your shoulders, Alan. And I think you've done a great job over the past couple of months or past couple of years, but I still remember very well when I started how different it was and how that responsibility was spread out and how you had another point person to go to when we're talking about public utilities. You had another point person who was an expert in community development. And I think that led to stronger conversations and just stronger awareness of, from the council, being experts as well. Yes, we have expert staff, but staff have already had their conversations behind, you know, in, throughout the week before we get together. So this is supposed to be our committee meeting and supposed to be our discussion with the expertise we bring to the table, not just regurgitating, you know, necessarily what staff has already come to us with. So.
And, and that's something that I think, you know, yes, it would make it a little easier on me and it would be nicer to have somebody else that, you know, follows up with community development, looks at the plan commission, you know, minutes or whatever, you know, to get us to the point where, okay, what happened at this meeting? Why, you know, why was there a split vote at, at plan commission? Or, you know, why is this back to us again for something else? And I think it's easier than for other members of the committee, speaking of the committee of the whole, to go to that, if you want to call it the point person or, you know, whatever. That's a way that, okay, three of us can contact that person, that person can go to the staff head that's responsible for it, get those answers and be ready to present them at the COW meeting. You know, or hey, we need, you know, somebody to follow up on this. Or in the event, like we've done in very much the past, because I don't think anybody was here, when we did the bridge, um, we, we had a, an ad hoc committee that was an executive committee that met every week and, you know, got information from the contractor, from our staff, from the engineer, so that we had an update. Because I mean, it was, that was a nightmare to go through. And the same thing with River Street when we did the construction there. You know, we had all these issues of trying to keep the front door open for people so that they could have their business survive, you know, a, a major construction project like that. So that's one where I can see that that helps because there's, you know, if somebody's interested in that, there's more oversight that's available and a simple report can come back at each committee meeting, you know, each committee.
I think it helps having the contractors come and give an update.
Yes, I think that's good, but you know, when it's a, you know, a big project, you know, if there was somebody here that wanted to be involved with wastewater treatment plan or the water treatment plant upgrades, those would be something that it would be easy for one person to have a meeting with the contractor and have a meeting with Jeremy and then come back and, and let us know, you know, hey, we're doing great, we're ahead of schedule. I think the reality with what we have with wastewater treatment is they know how big a contracts they have, they know how much money we spend, and they know much, how much all of us rely on them for the expertise to make this right. Because if they screw up and the plant gets built wrong, we're all on the hook because it doesn't meet the EPA regulations or whatever happens with it. So I think that's why they've been here every month. And I think that's just their style. There are other projects we have that we have our staff that'll reply to us on us, you know, keep us up to date on what's going on, the memos that we get. And, you know, I guess in the end, what I'll say is, I think, yes, we should have, you know, the committee chairs for those positions so that way, when, you know, need be, they can take the items that are from that department and, and bring them up at, you know, the COW meeting and at the city council, present them at city council.
Yeah, I, I'm going to echo a lot of what other folks said. And I think I'll go ahead and throw it out there and just challenge, if anybody does want an extra meeting a month, you know, speak now or forever hold your peace, I think might be where we're at on that. Um, I totally agree with what's being said here. I think having the chairs, um, leading the discussion would be very helpful. Uh, when, Alan, when you were gone, Tony led the meeting, he did very well, he did a very good job. This is a disparagement on him, but it also made me realize that if I had to sit in that chair, I'd have no clue what I'm doing. Right? Uh, and so I think it also lends some capacity building. Um, if we do have a chair who then needs to lead a discussion on the wastewater plant or on, you know, electric utility, they'll learn how to do it. They'll learn how, how tough that seat can be and we can maybe see some, you know, see us all grow in sort of running the meetings and the discussions. But I, I also like the idea and something we should all keep in mind is that we can still create maybe a monthly meeting or a weekly meeting for a special project. That's a great tool to put in our toolbox and deploy when we need it without having to have it be all the time forever.
I will say one thing too. I, I think the, the lack of those happening over the last couple of years is due to the staff that we have. You know, them being the liaisons between contractors or, you know, whatever's going on and, and us. I think clearly defined memos that really state, you know, pros and cons of whatever we're talking about that we have to discuss and the ability to have them out there with enough time for us to get the answers or to form the questions that we need to ask at a committee meeting. And so I think that's really important. I also think it's a good way to have other people involved in the agendas. You know, if the, the chair is not here, somebody else has to read, you know, the consent agenda or somebody else has to present that item. If that means that they spend another 10 or 15 minutes going through the memo to make sure that they know what it's about, you know, then, then that's what it is. I don't think, unless it's a really, you know, deserving subject or something, that we have to really have the extra committee meeting, you know, once a month or anything. And if it's two or three people that want to get together because they have more questions about one subject or something, I think that's fine. And I think if the, you know, the committee chair can, can oversee that, that's even better because then that gets brought back together to us at a meeting. And honestly, I will tell you, I've said it many times, it's so much easier to go to a committee of the whole meeting and have everybody that's available be there to discuss the situation, to discuss the questions, to ask things that maybe four or five of us never thought of asking. And to get that out there before we have to approve something or, or not approve something. So I think it's really important that there's those opportunities, you know, that we take advantage of them and, and make sure that we get as much information, both in question form and in answer form, out there so that we all feel good about the decisions that we make and the votes that we take. Alice?
I support having chairs as well. I think it's, um, makes sense, you know, for us to be more involved and have a better understanding of different, um, different departments. My question is if we did do the chairs and the vice chairs, from what I'm hearing, will be experts in that field. And if people have questions, they'll go to that chair. I remember that we are encouraged to reach out to staff if we have questions, so we can still do that.
Oh, yeah.
But maybe CC the chair, like keep them in the loop or does it not matter? I just want to, you know, have a better understanding of like what would be expected when we have the chairs and the vice chairs.
I think, you know, if we do have chairs for that.
I don't think it's experts in the field, I think it's somebody that has a strong interest in that particular area.
It's more that.
Because none of us are necessarily, I'm going to, I mean, necessarily experts in anything necessarily, but somebody who has a strong interest that would be willing to then put in the extra time to maybe do research or, you know, ask questions of the staff. But I don't think anybody expects you to be like an expert in public utilities. Okay.
I could foresee, for instance, that there's a complex topic that's coming up and, um, we might, uh, have a conversation with the chair and the vice chair to say, we're going to be, uh, talking about this and what questions do you anticipate that, you know, uh, the other city council people will have? What information do you think that the public will want to know about this so that we can, you know, present it in its best light when it gets here? Not that, you know, things are being discussed from a policy standpoint, that it should be all of you discussing, uh, things from a policy standpoint, but helping us to anticipate what the questions are and that we'll have those, the answers to those questions at the meeting.
As I was saying, to me, it will expedite some of the questions and some of the things we get to in meetings and, you know, following the Lehman rule, we don't want to beat past 10. So, yeah. You know, I think it's important that we do have those communications, whether it's direct with staff or with one or two of us on the council or a chair of whatever committee. I think it's important that, especially when it's, you know, two or three get together and are, yeah, these are the questions I think we should talk about. Those need to get to everybody, including staff. So that way before the meeting, you know, it's not, okay, we have 17 questions between the 14 of us and we're going to spend five minutes on each one of them, we're going to be here all night. So, you know, if that stuff comes out first, I, I think that's better. You know, and I think we'll just have to figure out how, you know, the dynamics of that really work out as we go through things. And there's going to be, to me, a myriad of different things we have to deal with. I mean, some questions aren't real hard. Do we put a bigger sign and allow somebody to put it up higher than before? That's one question. If it's, how do we handle, you know, electronic signs in downtown? That's a bigger question. Houston?
Just kind of falling on that, I think definitely not having more meetings, but having chairs as a sort of providing stewards for a topic is the real benefit. It's basically having a point person who can be more proactive with that, um, without necessarily having a whole meeting to replace the committee of the whole, is I think what we're all kind of driving at here. It, it's just giving an individual that responsibility so you don't have the bystander effect of all of us kind of co-sharing that responsibility a little bit and kind of talking past each other a lot. And I definitely like, really like the idea of having them be that point person between other members of COW and, and council and the staff so that we can get all of our questions consolidated. Cause like, some, you know, sometimes folks CC staff, we CC council when they have a question to staff, sometimes they don't, but that process is very like sporadic. So having somebody handling all that discourse upfront and being able to summarize it as a part of the memo. So we have the staff memo side and we also have the like discussion that's already happened with a member of the COW. I think that could have a lot of real benefits on top of.
Remember that we have to keep below the threshold for open meetings act.
Right.
And that we don't copy everybody on the answers.
Oh, 100%.
To start with, unless it's one that goes out, make sure you don't hit reply all.
Anything that can help that because you're talking to one person and maybe the co-chair. And then they move it to staff and then.
Staff can.
Can reply back. Yeah, yeah. And then we could have all the information ahead of time.
That's kind of what I'm getting at. Like I want to have it clear, should we be doing it that way then and not going to staff directly? Or go to staff directly, but still copy the chair and vice chair? I just want to have a clear understanding of what we want.
Could be both.
Um, I, my concern is that we will be adding, like, time to a lot of our plates if this is not very clear what this looks like. I don't like the, the telephone game of I need to email you and then you email staff and then they email you and then, you know, like that, nobody has time for that. And, um, then things get lost in translation and then I have to wait for you to check your email to get the staff in. So, um, I'm, I'm okay with the idea of chairs. I think I, I like the idea more of just how it relates to a meeting and then them helping lead discussions. I'm okay with that aspect of it. The behind the scenes, all this conversation about extra responsibilities or more research or all of that, I'm less okay with that. I don't see anything broken right now, really, with how we're doing things. I understand the idea of, you know, if there are chairs, then maybe people have more responsibility or feel like more responsibility, but honestly, that's why we're elected. We should be doing that anyway. So.
I don't think we want to take any of that away from anybody. You know, if you're not part of the government services committee or whatever the names are, and you want to, you know, touch base with our local, the elected officials above us, there's nothing wrong with that.
I guess what I'm trying to ask is what is broken that we are trying to fix?
I don't know, I didn't.
We have, so vacancies.
For previous.
There were vacancies for previous.
Previous structure.
We got four vacancies right now. What, uh, when we, I asked if we want to fill those vacancies, we said we want to wait until after the election and have a conversation about committees in general. And so that's.
Until July to really get there.
So, um, since I've been, this is my fifth year on city council and when, in this time, we had some very loose committees and chairs, but I don't think anything was very active. So in my four years being on council, I'm just going from this framework. What are, like, is there anything that's not working in the way that it's been in the last four years that we're trying to fix? Cause like, I think we need to address that first and then work from there. Like.
In my experience, my first four years here, I would say that the committee structure was active and that the chair or the vice chair would be the one who would introduce the topics. In the last three to four years, that seems to have kind of gone by the wayside as the vacancies, um, were created and not filled.
I'll say one of the things why I probably took most of the stuff that came up on the agendas was a lot of times the chairs weren't here. You know, at the committee meetings, there was, I'm not going to point any fingers, there were people that were not here on a regular basis. So it was like, okay, I'm sitting here, I'm running the meeting, I might as well just do what's there, you know? And we didn't fill after people left, you know? And I'll put some of that on my own shoulders that, you know what? It was just simpler just to keep going through the agenda than try to figure out, okay, who wants to be the vice chair of government service or who wants to be the vice chair of public utilities? It was like, okay, nobody's talking about it, I'm just doing it. Robin?
So just for a little background then, so those vacancies ended up not getting filled, but was that, did we not also then switch to this current model in response?
We were already in.
They were in place and then the council at the time decided to move to this committee of the whole model and also have those committees?
It was back in 2013, um, that council at that time decided that instead of having the separate monthly meetings, they were going to have a joint committee of the whole. And, but they were going to retain the four committees that existed and the chair, the vice, the chair and the vice chair would share the responsibility for, I'm going to call it shepherding those discussions. And it was, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, Robin. I was just going to say, when the vacancies appeared, that's when this, that structure kind of just fell apart.
Okay. Um, I'm kind of with Leah on this though, I'm still, so we are seeing that there is a gap in a person to shepherd topics at. in a person to shepherd topics at committee of the whole meeting. That is the problem we're trying to solve. Okay.
Yeah, I think everyone's getting there. We're a little dancing around it, but basically we want to take some workload off of Allen because it is just naturally funneled in his direction. I think he's the one with the intellectual property, being on council so long, to be able to easily traverse. So you've done a great job, Allen, and thank you.
And also read really fast.
Right. That being said, I, you know, I think obviously there's ways, there's ways to do that without necessarily having chairs. I mean, it could be a rotating, you know, pro tem or whatever, I don't know, but somebody else sits in that seat or somebody else has that position to run the whole meeting. Because I really, the more we talk about it, it sounds to me like the chair and/or vice chair are really just a formality. And really what you're going to do is really whatever you want to take out of it. And so.
Maybe just propose that we do set it up as, fill the positions up on there and then for the time being, the rest of this year or something, just present what's on the agenda for those departments. And that way we'll just see how that works.
Read. If all we're looking to do is split up the reading, 100%.
Right. And that can be as simple as, okay, I'm going to sit here and I'm going to talk to you tonight about, you know, this task order. Here's the dollar amount, here's what part of the budget it's coming out of, and these are the pros and cons. And you start the discussion because that's part of government services.
And then would it be on that chair to call on people?
Yes.
To follow Robert's rules for that part of the meeting?
Right, and that was something I was going to say is, you know, that's, I got my little RRO here that I wanted to remember that we bring that up. And that's how we should do that, so that way people don't get cut off, that way people know that, okay, yes, I'm trying to go back and forth and see the hands and everything, at least I'm not looking up the screen, figure who's not here that I have to keep track of. I think that that's important, that that's how we do it, you know? Sarah?
Will we get to have the gavel while we are leading the conversation?
You want it?
It's really the only power you're going to get, right? Because everything's going to come down to a vote anyway.
Right. And the reality is, is, you know, you can ask for the motion, you could make the motion when you're controlling the meeting, that's, you know, and how many times do I make it? And, you know, like tonight I tried to make sure that I got everybody involved by asking for, you know, somebody to make that motion. And I think that's a better way of doing it than just making the motion every time I bring a subject out.
It's isn't a power thing, it's just about having somebody.
My hand up.
Well, and it's also an experience thing, because I think at some point, hopefully, you know, somebody in this, you know, room that wants to be up here and run these meetings or wants to be in this position will have that opportunity. So, you know, if you get more time about it, you feel a whole lot better about reading stuff off the agenda now that you've done it for years. You know, it's an easier thing to do. The first time you do it, it's not fun. The first time you run a meeting and try to figure out, okay, did I forget somebody over here or not? That's not fun. Because some people have scowls, they don't like me. Alice, go ahead.
I like that idea of at least doing it for the rest of this year. Along with that, if everyone's for that, I really liked Gabby's email where she broke it down to relevant committees and Jen, you mentioned that as well at the other meeting. I think the structure that she laid out with those six committees helps space out the four that were existing, so it's not as much on one person, right?
Unless there be more focus on them if they're diverse, if they're separate.
Yes, yeah. So I'd like to suggest we do that as well.
Chris?
There's only 14 of us, that makes 12 positions, you know? I mean, I don't know, I just think that's kind of going a little bit overboard now. I mean, for all the complaints I just heard about like this whole concept, now we're going to micromanage it even more down to 12 people are going to be.
Like I said, we'll try it for six months and see how it is. If we're not happy with it, we'll change. Jen?
You know, it's not micromanaging, Chris. It's, it's kind of like building people's skills on this. And I do agree, I do like having the, this spread out a little bit more. I think that this is a thing that we do just try for a small amount of time, six months and then we come back and we have a conversation and see how that is. I don't think, you know, it's anything new, it's scary, but let's try it, let's test it. Couldn't be any worse than what we're doing now, so.
If you really hate it, I'll take it back and then in two years I'll be done.
I don't think there's anything being done worse, I don't think there's anything being done.
Yeah, I don't think that that's, we're trying to solve a problem.
Right.
I think we're trying to.
Just add more structure to, you know, what we're kind of doing and giving people the opportunity to have that conversation or be a part of that leadership.
Abby?
She's next.
I'll get to Chris. Go ahead.
Oh no, I lost it, sorry. Go ahead, Chris.
I want to say that there's nothing to prevent people from being a part of a conversation because I will point out that these meetings are never done in 30 minutes. So everybody has plenty of things to say and are always involved in the conversation whenever they want. It doesn't matter if you're named a chair or a vice chair or whatever the case may be, everybody's always free to talk about whatever topic is brought up.
These positions are volunteer, right? So it's not, you're making us do it, so if you don't want to do it, you don't sign up for it and we just won't have a vice chair or chair, right?
Right.
Okay.
It is a volunteer position.
There we go.
Okay. I think I'm done with this.
What's the direction? What's the direction? What are we doing?
For six months, we'll try it, we'll plug everybody in that wants to be on committees and different things, we'll figure that out. If two people, you know, are both same seniority or whatever, arm wrestle in the back room for whoever.
Four committees or six committees? Four committees or six committees?
Okay, what are our four committees there? Government services, community development, city services and public utilities. Those four.
And Tony's not here.
Tony's not here, he's second in seniority.
Yeah, he's second.
I would propose that we share with the folks who aren't here that we have decided to do this action and then pick the committees at the next committee of the whole. Because I think, I think to be fair, we should let the folks who aren't here tonight know that we've decided this action so that at the next.
I probably will not take a committee chair. Just let me focus on this for the next two years. So, you know, that will give that opportunity to somebody else, because I've been on community development for almost the whole time I've been on city council in some shape or form.
Still not clear. Are we going back to the four committees or are we going to the six?
What are your six?
The six that I had were public utilities, public safety, economic development, environmental and land use, government services and the transportation. Government services being the catchall for all the others that don't fit into any of the other committees. But also if somebody can tell me the difference between government services and city services right now, then sure, I'll go back to four, but I don't believe we know what the difference is.
There's a definition in the ordinance.
Is there?
Yeah.
And I do have a.
I was going to say, what do we have in committee structures or anything in ordinance that prevents us from changing those or would make?
Yes, we would have to reestablish what the names and the definitions are of the committees.
Laura?
Yes?
I believe that all the government services is anything related to the ordinances that we have to pass with changes in respect to that, so.
I think we keep the four. I know this is just a test for the next six months. Keep the four that we have so we don't have to do anything, we don't have to eat up any more staff time to enact this. Just go with the four that we have currently so we don't have to change an ordinance or change anything. And that will just be the simplest way to do this test run for six months.
And then will we be starting fresh with seniority about choosing whose chair and vice chair?
And I would ask, I heard in the conversation that you guys may be interested in more information regarding weekly meetings and stuff that we have on the large capital projects. If there's any other information that you guys want to see in the weekly update that Laura sends out, let us know so we can get those, that information included. Sometimes there's not very much to report back. Tomorrow morning is typically our day for wastewater, Friday's for the Peace Bridge and the list goes on and on for all the different stuff that we have within public work. So if there's something that's lacking, let us know.
I kind of remember back when we, when I first started, there was a lot of questions, there was a lot of times the mayor would go through the committees and say, anything to report? And we'd say, nothing to report.
Yeah. And I think that that, in some respects, was the fact that at that time, we had trans, you know, we had transformed from the original committee structure into committee of the whole and there really wasn't anything to report on. Because all you were doing was bringing up, you know, for instance, you know, for me for community development was anything that was development related would be there. Out of the plan commission, this came out of there, they don't have all the stuff ready, it'll be here, next council meeting, you know? If you have any questions about this development, you know, contact them, that's really all it was.
I think that this is fine then. And then, just so everybody who wasn't here before doesn't know, it just goes by, the seniority thing just means whoever's longest on, if they want to do it, they get their pick. And then it goes down the line, whatever's left, if you still feel like doing it, you get your pick. And that's kind of the way it goes.
I think before we pick them, we'll have to have Tony here figure out what he wants.
What he wants first.
Right, yeah.
I'm definitely down to try this out. I will be interested to see how it goes. I do agree with the succession planning and the practice, I do agree with that 100%. So we do need to find a way in there. But I do think without the separate committees actually meeting together, I mean, you know, it just, I think, becomes a formality. I mean, we'll see.
And it's a way to spread out, you know, yes, I've done this and it doesn't really bother me, but I think it's also good, you know, something I've thought about lately is succession planning at my own job, here, everything. You know, it is important, I think, for people to become comfortable with leading the discussion or, you know, focusing a discussion on something that they do have interest in. You know, do I want to have Jen do public utilities and explain why we're buying two new trucks or anything? I'm sure she can do it and I'm sure she wouldn't be mean, but I doubt that that's something that she's interested in.
She's in.
Right?
I mean, I may be stuck with it.
Right, sorry I jinxed you, but.
I mean, and I understand that and that's something that I, that is like, as part of my development, that would be something that I would have to get over and learn to develop, of being able to present even a topic that you're not comfortable with. And again, that is all part of a development that could help into the future.
And that's why I think that there just needs to be that opportunity for everybody on the council to, at some point, should they choose to want to do that, they can do that. And that's one of the reasons why I'm not going to take one of them. You know, let somebody else do that.
So I'm not going to stick with public utilities. Congrats, Leah.
Hey, that's going to be diversification and all kinds of other things going forward. Okay, so I think we've beat this up enough.
Oh, yes.
We are going to move to item seven, the city council updates. 7.1 is project status.
Ah, just a couple of things the park board met last Tuesday and one of the items on their agenda was to make a decision about whether they wanted to join us on the feasibility study for the plan for removing the dam and the feasibility for concept B or what other type of design we may want to include in that feasibility study. And they decided that they would like to join us and, but they want to go back to joint development of a request for proposals. And so they suggested that a couple of members of their staff meet with a couple of members of our staff and try to determine a mutually acceptable scope of work for which we would seek proposals. Also, glasses. The data center water master agreement was not on the agenda this week because they needed additional time to review the agreement and so it will be on the next committee of the whole agreements. And electric has submitted the 50 megawatt load letter to comm ed this week to be prepared so that we know what the timelines and the cost of that might be. We also have work going on on Main Street near the high school, just right near the West Side Fire Station, there's a leaking water main there that needs an emergency repair. Hopefully this will be done like a one to two day operation. There's a lot of signage in the area. We know there's a lot of signage all over town with our various projects that we have underway and we really appreciate people's patience in that regard, but.
I guess the chief, one thing. Chief?
Yes?
How do you think that's going to affect your, is it going to affect your access in and out of the station at all? Do you think?
We've been told that we'll be able to enter and access off the East driveway.
Okay.
So just not through the main apron, probably.
Okay.
And the Slowdys has been kind enough to open the bus lane so we can cross.
Oh, so you can cross so you can get out to Randall's quicker?
Well, crossing through.
Okay.
Over to Western and those, that's.
That's true, okay.
Yep.
Cool. I tried to get the superintendent at the time to, we named the street after him if they leave it open, but he didn't want to do that.
And the last thing is that the finance department is interviewing applicants for their finance assistant position. That's all I have. Oh, I'm sorry, there was one other thing that I wanted to mention. We did have a resident contact us who had a very bad experience with who they thought was a reputable contractor. Shortly prior to my joining the city, there was discussion at city council about whether or not we wanted to register contractors in the city to make sure that, you know, they're people who meet minimum qualifications. And the decision at that time was absolutely, no, pretty unanimous that that city council did not want to do that on the basis that a homeowner has every right to pick whomever they want to perform work at their house. So I just wanted to ask, do you want to have a discussion about that? We can kind of share with you the information from the last time that it was discussed, the pros and cons, and maybe have you reconsider a policy? Yes?
Can't, can't we have a, an approved list that doesn't need to be followed? It's something you can reference. Who would, who does the city say we should use?
So endorsing is something, and I'll have to check with the city attorney on that, but then when things go south, the city may be responsible.
When the list is out there, that's.
But if you can say, we've checked minimum qualifications, you know, at least we have made them be above a certain bar.
That was.
But if we endorse people, then if the contractor screws up something, then they'll say, I would rather sue the city who has much deeper pockets than said contractor.
This contractor was on your list and it went south, then they were on your list, you're responsible that it went south.
There's got to be an indemnification clause we can put in there or something.
I don't remember where, where the discussion was, but I do remember it was pretty adamant. I mean, that's almost like saying, okay, we're going to start, you know, this is the plumber that's on our list, this is the, you know, HVAC. It, even if it's not true, it's perceived as that. So that was, from what I remember, the discussion we had. Matt?
I would shy away from minimum qualifications. I think you get to a point where those minimum qualifications are just someone paying a fee once a year to become a registered contractor and you're not going to get much with it. So I think you just leave it alone.
I was just trying to see your interest in having it be on a future committee of the whole agenda or if we have no interest in such thing at this time.
I don't have any and I'll say this, if it's one complaint out of how many thousands of building permits, renovations and everything else we deal with every year, I don't think that's something we need to chase.
If there's any legal obligation whatsoever, I think it's a no. But if it's something we can provide to the city, say, hey, these are the folks we've used and we approve them, but indemnification clause, I mean.
I always just send people to the chamber. Here's the list of all the businesses that feel like it's, you know, it's a right, the right thing to do to be part of the chamber. I mean, and when you've got businesses outside our city that join the chamber, it's because they want people to know that they're a reputable business.
That's a good call.
And they, you know, they communicate. Jen?
I'm not really in favor, again, because of some of the stuff that has been brought up. But also I think the staff has much better things to be doing than keeping a list of contractors. And I think referencing them to the chamber is the best bet for us.
Blessing.
I guess we're having the discussion now. I'm not necessarily for or against, I would note, would registration have positive benefits in terms of ensuring, you know, compliance of the local contractors with certain things like going through with permitting as they should be? Could we add not spam calling our residents for several weeks over roofing as not as one of those qualifications?
With regard to chamber membership, I don't think that they turn you away if you pay your membership dues. So that may not be an indication that they have good customer service.
Yeah. I mean. Yeah, I mean, I guess if we're having the discussion now, we could have a system where contractors voluntarily submit themselves to, to say, hey, we've allowed the city to look at us and we comply with XYZ to get on this list that we voluntarily go in with. That way, we're not endorsing them, it's open to anybody to put their name in, all we're doing is saying, hey, do you meet the, you've told us you meet the criteria, we double-checked and you do, right? It's more of a stamp than it is an approval. That would get around to a lot of the things. Whether we want to do that or not, maybe the chamber's the better place. So I think we're giving you mixed messages on if we want to have a future conversation on this.
If three people say yes, they wanted to discuss it, but I actually haven't heard one person say that they want to discuss it.
I don't know, I guess, to me, the downside of it is too big to show a benefit, especially if there's one complaint. Well, don't let the one complaint be the.
I understand that.
I have some contractors I'd like to put through.
Saying that, we see several contractors who, when our CED department receives an application from them as the contractor, we're like, oh, here we go. But, you know, that's, it's not enough for us to say, oh, please let us establish this, because it is.
Our staff has better things to do.
Sounds good. All right.
One last question. Do other communities have?
Yes.
Many. So it is something that can be done.
Mm-hmm. OK. Any other business? Anybody have any other business? Guess what we have now? Executive session for collective bargaining and personnel.
I think we did, one other thing for other business, we did get an email from somebody asking about a cancer awareness flag in October. I just feel like we should bring it up, probably should come up.
I do him already, and I'm going, that was one of my things another, to ask that we have that on the next COA meeting in August. It's a cancer awareness flag for October, and I will present that, and Bob will be down here with it, with sample, or if not, he'll have it emailed to us before that meeting.
So I just want to reiterate the conversation that we had when we put our flag policy in place, and it was to be very careful that we, because you're going to have so many groups coming at you and having to make a decision that that's worthwhile and that's not. I mean, it's, you know, you're going to have folks come back with, asking for religious holiday flags or perhaps even some clubs that you don't endorse the, you know, some of the things that they do. And, but because you have to be on an even playing field, it may put you in some uncomfortable positions. We can do proclamations like we ordinarily do for cancer awareness, for, you'll see in September, for suicide prevention. But I think that our city attorney would counsel to just have the community flag and the other flags that we have. We have the one other flag that we fly to show that we're an inclusive community.
That's what causes the problem.
Yeah, exactly. That's the main issue.
I think just, just in my mind, one of the reasons I replied back to Bob, and one of the things I've thought about and had some discussions with other people in town, whether they support the flags that we've had up there before or not, is showing that it's not just one group, it's not just one flag that we have flown, that if somebody brings something forward that is universal, non-discriminatory, how many people on this council have had cancer or, you know, have dealt with it in their own families or whatever, it is something that is universal, non-discriminatory, and just shows support for other people. Kevin? Alice had her hand up first, though. I defer to her. I'm sorry, Alice. Go ahead.
For this policy, do we need to have three members of council support it to get on a discussion going on it?
One to bring it forward, and then it doesn't go up without us voting on it.
Right.
So I would, I would say that we know it's coming up next week, let's not have the discussion now, let's push it out till next week if we know it's coming. I don't, two weeks, great, even better, right? More time.
Next Monday's council, and then it'll be the following Tuesday.
Like, I don't think we need to have the full discussion at the moment about what's coming up, just now I think we're all put on notice to be ready for that discussion.
Let's not reiterate the discussions that we've had dozens of times already on this topic.
Look at it for the merits that are there, yes or no? That's as simple as, I will try to present it that way, and that's.
And if anybody has questions, there's a policy, you can read it.
Right, and I'll have the policy with me, so that way, if there are questions, I'll be able to answer that. OK? All right. Now we will go into executives, I need a motion for executive session for collective bargaining and personnel.
A moment.
So, Sarah and Kevin, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? OK, motion.